2021, so happy to be able to say that. City Council Study Session. This City Council Session will be conducted as a virtual meeting, held electronically in accordance with Council Adopted Policy Number 20-01. Therefore, members of the public must access this meeting electronically. The City Council does not vote during study sessions since the presentations are for information and discussion only. Therefore, there is no public comment during our study sessions. So with that, we are so happy you're with us on a brand-new year, and we are going to kick it off this afternoon with an update from our Youth Commission. And this is our Youth Commission Chair, Julia Regroot. Am I saying that right, Julia?
It's RiGroot, so.
RiGroot, I should have asked ahead of time, but thanks. And Julia, we are very hopeful that you'll be back in school soon, actual, real school. But for now, you're probably more familiar with the virtual world than I am. So what's happening with the Youth Commission?
All right, well, first of all, hello to everyone. I hope you all had a good holidays and a great new year. So as an update, we're continuing our work on our project to partner Douglas County Schools with Lone Tree Businesses to provide meals to low-income students during the pandemic. As we've learned, that's a challenge for a lot of schools and families. We're currently reaching out to businesses and to the community as well as applying for the Stop Hunger Foundation Youth Grant with the hope to have a few trial businesses beginning the program by the end of the month. We're also beginning a community-based donation part to the project. Where donations that will be given directly to the Youth Commission will fund gift cards to local grocery stores, which will also be given to Douglas County families. The Commission wants to give a big thank you to Councilmember Carpenter for his generous donation, which will be used to provide many meals to local families. We look forward to hearing your input and will continue to keep you updated on this project.
Wonderful. Do we have any questions from Council? I'll start off with Councilmember Carpenter.
So Julia, you forgot the biggest part of what you did the last month, our team yoga session that we did. So to fill everybody in, so Marcia Austin from the Douglas County Youth Initiative came up with an idea just trying to get kids, it's all based around mental health and just overall well-being. And so she came up with the idea of doing a virtual yoga session. So our own Najla was actually the leader of the yoga class. And Leana was on it and Austin, and I sadly am not nearly as flexible as Najla, for sure. So, and in full disclosure, I was pretty sore the next day. But it was a lot of fun. We're just trying to get it, think creatively and find a new way to get kids to get together and do something healthy. We decided that the next effort will be a trivia night. So we're working on that and what that's going to look like, too. So we'll get you more details on that. But then I had the privilege of sitting in on their meeting and listening to their entire agenda, and I was just blown away. So great job, Julia and Anna and the whole gang.
Wonderful, wonderful. Councilmember Shaw, any questions?
No specific questions, just, it sounds like that's fun, and fun is always good, people engage and keeping their minds off of bad things that might be happening. And so kudos to the Youth Commission.
And Mayor Lieutenant Brannick, any questions?
No questions for me, just really, like Jay, have a real heart for the needs of our students during this time. I feel like even though we're going to be going back to school pretty soon, there's still just a lot of online and a lot less time for us to commune with one another. So really appreciate your efforts to look for both the fun parts of that and also the support through food and funding for those kids. So really excited about the work that you're doing, so thank you.
So Julia, I do have a question regarding the grant that you're applying for. When will you find out the results of whether or not you were successful? How much is the grant for? And then what is the distributing? Who will help you guys identify families in need and distribute the gift cards and the funds?
All right, so the grant is going to be due at the end of January, so we're hoping to hear back sometime between, like, in late February. It's worth $500, but the amount is sort of variable. So they could give us the full 500, but they could also give us a smaller amount. And then we're working with Eagle Academy and Eagle Ridge Elementary, which are the two Lone Tree-based schools, but might continue to reach out to a few more of the schools in the surrounding areas. And they have access, I guess, to the free and reduced lunch program. But for the most part, I think we're working on what's going to be most convenient for them because we don't really know what their struggles are. So we might do more of like a communal, like, not communal, but like, a grab-and-go situation. But if that's not possible, we're thinking of working with some of the vehicles the city has and with the Lone Tree Link to be able to distribute those meals directly to families.
And so are the families identified then through the school?
The goal isn't necessarily to identify families because there's a lot of privacy surrounding the free and reduced lunch program. But the goal is to publicize it through the schools so that families in need know about the program and know how they can access that.
Okay, great. Well, I'm excited to hear how this result goes. And who is the entity that is funding this? Who did you apply to, or who will you be applying for the grant to?
It's the Sodexo Stop Hunger Foundation Youth Grant. So I believe it's through the Sodexo program.
That's wonderful. Well, I'm really, really impressed that you guys have taken the initiative to kind of identify the need and then also try and find the solution. So very much appreciate future updates on that and want to wish you a very Happy New Year. Extend our best wishes to the rest of the Youth Commission for a successful 2021, and we're looking forward to hearing from you guys on how this program is going. So thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, moving on. Next is our discussion concerning an ordinance amending Chapter 4 of the Lone Tree Municipal Code regarding use tax credit for affordable housing. And our Deputy City Manager, Kristin Baumgunner, will be leading this conversation. Happy New Year, Kristin!
Happy New Year, Mayor and City Council. I'm really happy to be here with you this afternoon and excited to present an idea that city staff would like to get some feedback from City Council on. Next slide, please. As you all are aware, we're really excited that the first attainable housing project for the city of Lone Tree will be coming, has been submitted and will be coming to City Council for consideration through the SIP process very soon. And as we were going through discussions with, on that project specifically, early on, Council had discussed with staff that they were supportive of some type of waiving fees related to that project to continue to allow them to be successful in their funding and everything that they needed to do to get this project underway. And as myself and the City Attorney and City Manager were talking about, long-term, how we address these types of fee waivers and tax credits, what would be the best way to approach that? Whether it should be an IGA with each individual developer or how we should structure them. Our City Attorney thought that it would be wise to just consider this as a policy discussion with Council and possibly just put something in our ordinance directly through ordinance in our code so that it's something that we have standing policy on. It's not based on a case-by-case and that we really have something showing that the city is supportive of these types of projects. And so that's really where this came from. And tonight, I'm excited to present a proposal, which would be a change to Chapter 4 of the municipal code, which is the Revenue and Finance Section of the city's code. And it's really intended tonight, this presentation, to give some background to City Council and also provide staff's kind of initial baseline proposal and then really seek Council guidance on this, since it is a policy change. And so for some background to start, the attainable housing policy documents that the city has in place consist of several. And this isn't a new topic, as many of you know. In the Comprehensive Plan and on the East Side SubArea Plans, this is a topic that we've discussed and incorporated in both of those documents as being an important goal for the city. And then we also went into a lot more detail with it when we renegotiated the East Side Annexation Agreement in November of 2017. And there are actual requirements as part of that annexation agreement for a certain number of attainable housing units as development occurs on the east side. And then also, as a requirement of the East Side SubArea Plans, we also have a Ridge Gate attainable housing plan that was adopted by City Council in July of 2018. And that gets into more detail as far as design guidelines, administrative processes, and how those types of projects actually get to approval and design and build. Next slide, please. And so from the attainable housing plan, and this is kind of a continued message from the Comp Plan and the SubArea Plans, is that the city of Lone Tree and Ridge Gate recognize the importance of having and preserving a diverse housing stock that provides options and choices for every stage, every life stage, and allows residents to remain in Lone Tree as they age while also supporting housing for a variety of income levels, providing an opportunity for people to live close to their jobs in Lone Tree. And so really, that has been the premise of this, as being a goal for the city is to really allow a great mix of affordable housing opportunities for everyone and in every stage of their life. And so we are really excited that we are going to see one of the first developments on the east side, the attainable housing project. Next slide, please. So though there are a lot of policy documents, none of these require the city to provide any type of direct waivers or incentives. And so as again, as we were looking at how we should address these as requests come in, because we're anticipating we would have some requests in this area just based on, again, making kind of the financing work when they're applying for CHAFA loans and those other types of financing sources, staff is recommending adding a new section to Chapter 4 to provide an option for both tax credits and fee waivers for projects that meet certain attainable housing criteria. And we did have to address this in two different sections because the main fees that are paid or revenues that are paid by these types of projects would be construction use tax, which needed to be addressed under our Use Tax Code, and then just fees in general, which include things like planning fees, engineering fees, building permit fees, et cetera. Also, though, a lot of this discussion in previous years has been focused on the east side, this code change would apply citywide. So it would be open for consideration for any development within the city of Lone Tree. Next slide, please. So as far as the actual proposed ordinance, staff is proposing a new section to be added to Chapter 4, Section 4-3-140, which would be called the Construction Use Tax Credit Section. Again, this would be specific to construction use tax only, would not apply to general city sales or use tax. It is currently proposed that it could be up to 100% credit so that I wouldn't be, that's not a guarantee, but that we would consider up to 100%. But initially, some of our thoughts as staff was that it must meet certain criteria, and we proposed three for consideration. And then on the next slide, wanted to receive some other feedback from Council. Sorry, go back to the first slide. I said next slide, but didn't mean to change it. On this slide, next, we'll talk about that. But on this slide, the three initial criteria would be that it would require a certain number of the dwelling units in a project must be attainable for incomes at or below 60%. And so we're initially proposing 50% of the dwelling units to be at or below 60% AMI. Also, the units may be for sale, for rent, or mixed. So we wouldn't put restrictions as far as what type of development it is. And then also, we would look that the attainable units must be kept affordable for a minimum of 40 years. And then the proposed ordinance does also say that this would require City Council approval for each of these types of waivers. Next slide, please. So with that as the kind of foundation and kind of the initial thoughts on this, other things to consider that we wanted to, again, really get policy direction on this and not make a staff recommendation, but really wanted to hear from Council on other ideas to consider. Should, you know, should we consider a tiered approach? Should we get more structured? Or do you want to keep the code more flexible and then consider each one individually as they come for Council for approval? Should we require additional or include additional flexibility with minimum requirements for mixed-use projects? So if someone does come in with a creative project that intermingles market rate with attainable housing, do we want to incent those greater because their ability to possibly get additional financing might be less than some of the full attainable housing projects? Should we have different incentives for on, for sale products versus for rent? Again, looking at what the goals of the city are in some of these areas. And so, you know, we really do now want to pause before we talk about the fees and really get Council's thoughts, feedback. And we want to hear from you so that as we finish drafting this ordinance that we'll bring to you at a later date, we have gotten your policy direction first.
Thanks, Kristin. So I think this is a very important topic. I know we've touched on it a bit as we considered the east side development, but I think this is something that will set the stage for future considerations of workforce housing and attainable housing in the city of Lone Tree. So with that, I'm going to start off with our resident expert and Councilmember Shaw. What are your thoughts? And we'd love to learn from you.
Thanks, well, yeah, I like the idea of some flexibility. I'll tell you about a project that Douglas County Housing Partnership was approached with, although it kind of fell through. It did not, it's not something that's going to work out. But they were targeting 80% AMI, which in this part of the metro area incentivizes, you know, us to provide units to entry-level engineers, for example, or... So it's kind of a higher pay level person, but it's someone that you certainly wouldn't want to turn away from your community. And I think they were talking about maintaining affordability for 50 years instead of 40. But in any case, I like the idea of incorporating some flexibility because, and I see that you have with the, you know, that at least 50% is for 60% AMI or lower. So that may be enough, but maybe there's room for a little bit of additional flexibility. I also like the idea of incentivizing a for-sale product, perhaps differently than for rent because, again, that helps people become rooted in the community, and I think that's a benefit to everyone.
Do you have a comment on the tiered approach, Councilmember Shaw?
Yes.
So sliding scale.
Right, in other words, and also the flexibility in the wording that it can be up to, you know, 100% waiver and no real guarantees because you do want to look at the projects individually. I think there's an advantage to that. Yeah, I'd support tiered as well.
Great, thanks. Councilmember Carpenter?
Yeah, I think it's a well-needed product type, especially in the whole south metro area. I, too, am in agreement with a tiered approach. My only concern with the flexibility piece, I want to allow us some flexibility, but then I'm worried about the consistency or the inconsistency therein. And I just don't know that world well enough where another developer could come in and find out what terms there, another potential developer had and have there be some issues down the road. Again, I don't know that world as well. So I would defer to staff on that, for sure. And I really like the idea of creating incentive for for-sale product. I really want that to be an emphasis. There's just not a lot of it down in this area. So if we could provide additional incentive toward that, and not taking away from the for-rent product, but I think to create a greater incentive for that, I would be in favor for it, for sure.
Mayor Lieutenant Brannick?
Yeah, I think I agree with Win on the tiered approach that it would behoove us to have several levels to be considered. Again, just as guidance, as we get going. Jay said, I think we're really new to this, and it's going to take a lot of effort by the staff to really evaluate each of these as they come along, kind of independently. So having any kind of guidelines that we could have, especially subsequently as we're no longer on Council, you know, that guidance ahead of time, I think, is really helpful. So I don't have any sense of kind of minimum requirements and we're going to have to defer to staff to pull those together in a way that we can evaluate. And I, like Jay, believe that the for-sale product is super important moving forward, especially as we're talking about retirement and opportunities to keep some of our aging population in the region. I think that there's a huge, there'd be a huge benefit if that can be incented in some form or fashion.
Great, I had a couple of thoughts. And as I considered this, you guys, I was thinking about an awesome project, the Cobal Project that's going in with 70 units right at the Light Rail Station. It's just a fantastic project. But then, right after that project was approved, we are relatively close in time. We approved a project, a multifamily project with over 500 units. It's a phased project. And wouldn't it have been wonderful to have incorporated those 70 units inside the 500 units instead of having these two separate projects? And is there a way? How could we accomplish that? Is that even something that's possible with the financing associated with these type of projects? Would that even have been available for CHAFA funding? So I, too, like Council, would love to understand a little bit more about, is there something that we can do to? I think integration of the attainable or workforce housing within the market rate has proven to be the most successful way to incorporate that into the community. And this is obviously on a rental project. So I'd love to explore what kind of incentives might be able to be offered. And it would be tiered with a percentage of workforce attainable housing that might be included in a market rate project. And I'd love to understand if it's being done somewhere, particularly if it's being done successfully somewhere, and what factors might go into that. So I'd love staff to push a little bit on that. I'd also like to explore if there's a percentage of a for-sale project going in with market rate. For example, a large, single-family development. We just talked about a huge number of those. Is there something that we could do to incentivize a percentage of those? And it could be a lower percentage. I believe, I think it's Longmont, but it has like a 12 and a half, if you have 12 and 1/2% of a for-sale product being attainable or workforce housing integrated within a market rate for-sale project, that there are some incentives associated with that. So I would love to understand that more. And I think what I heard from Council is that they would be open to that as well. And I know that's different than a full project that's just devoted to attainable housing. So I'd love us to add on to what we're doing here and look into those other avenues as well. I'd like to understand, Kristin, what makes a project eligible for the CHAFA funding? Is, would this integration of attainable into market rate, does that make it harder to finance a project? And if there's something that we could be doing, even metro-wide or with the state legislature then, to make these integrated projects, finance for these integrated projects as available, you know, available, just like they are, you know? I'd like to increase the flexibility with potentially CHAFA-type funding to fund integrated, projects that are integrated. And even if that's beyond the city's work, maybe that's something we could be advocating for with Metro Mayor's Caucus or Colorado Municipal League. I'd like to understand that. The deed restrictions, I know you had indicated for 40 years. I'm curious where the 40 years, whether that's the generally accepted timeframe. Councilmember Shaw mentioned a project with 50 years deed restriction. And again, I think encouraging this investment in our community will benefit the community in the long run and having, you know, Lone Tree be a place that where everybody can live and seniors can age into the community and still be able to stay here. The starting, the folks starting out in their jobs invest in our community. So I think this is an important thing. I'd like to suggest we take our time and kind of do it right. This, I think is a real opportunity for us. So those are my thoughts. Kristin, do you have anything else? And obviously, I want to restate for the record that Councilmember Anderson has a personal matter that he had to attend to. His wife is having surgery right now as we speak, so he was not able to participate. But we want to make sure he has an opportunity to comment on this as well.
No, that's super helpful. I've made a lot of notes, and we will take all this into consideration when we're drafting the first draft for you guys to review. I do have a couple more slides just on the fee side. Next slide, please. So secondly, we're proposing a new section to be added to Chapter 4, which is a new Article 6, 4-6-10, which would be an adoption of fees for service. This is really adding in language to Chapter 4 about current processes in our code. And there really isn't anywhere where it discusses what we currently do as far as bringing to Council fee resolutions every year. So this section is just kind of stating again what's currently being done, that the City Council is authorized to adopt fees and charges to cover the cost of providing city services, programs, and facilities. In adopting any new city imposed fee or changing the amount of an existing city imposed fee for any services rendered by the city excluding franchise fees, the City Council shall determine the amount of such fee by resolution based on the direct and indirect costs incurred by the city in providing a service for which the fee is charged. And so we recently did this, and we usually do it towards the end of the year. And so this is just putting into the code that this is how fees are adopted for the city. On the next slide, we address kind of the inclusion of attainable housing in consideration of fee waivers. And so this would also include a new Article 6, 4-6-20 about waiver or reduction in fees. And it would state that a fee may be waived or reduced up to 100% if it meets the following criteria. The first one would be in accordance with a Council Adopted Policy or Resolution. And so we currently do have a Council Adopted Policy that Council approved back in December of 2018 that did give guidance that really says that the city is going to charge its fees per its fee schedule except in a couple limited circumstances. One, if there's a Council-approved IGA or other agreement in place that outlines some special arrangement, or if the city is a financial contributor to the event or project. And in that case, those fees may be considered in kind. But really, other than those two circumstances, it would need approval to be waived. And so we wanted to keep that. We feel like in the past, having a Council Adopted Policy that gives direction on that has worked well and, again, gives flexibility to the city manager, if needed, to decide in limited circumstances if a fee waiver should be considered. We now are incorporating a second piece, saying, again, specific to attainable housing, that if the public interest will be served, a fee waiver would be intended to assist in the provision of attainable housing, similar to the tax credit, but would have to follow the same criteria as in Section 4-3-140, which is what we just discussed, is going through the actual criteria. And so this way, it refers back just to that same criteria that we could also not only look at construction use tax, but also look at fee waivers. The attainable housing fee waivers, we're recommending those, again, take City Council approval. And again, just wanted to get this in the code so that there's clear direction as far as what the process is for fee waivers. On the next slide, really, the next steps, again, tonight, was to get feedback from Council and continue to, if anything else comes to mind, reach out to me and let me know if anything else comes up that you'd like us to consider. And we'll make sure to reach out to Councilmember Anderson. We'll be providing this video to him so that he can review the presentation as well. And I will reach out to him for further clarification or questions he might have. And then staff will be working to finalize a draft ordinance with consultation with the Douglas County Housing Partnership. We're planning on doing first reading on January 19th, if we're ready for that, and then have second reading on February 2nd. If we are able to stay to the schedule and provide Council with the information they need, then we would be looking to bring back approval, probably either the second meeting in February or first meeting in March, on the Cobal Project. in February or first meeting in March, on the Cobal project for approval, as they will be submitting their SIP in that similar timeframe. And so with that, again, if there's any other questions or final thoughts, and just again, thank you so much for your time this evening. And I'm really excited to start a new year with an exciting project like this.
Thanks, Kristin. Any other follow up from Council based on the remaining slides? Nope, I'm seeing heads shaking. No. Yeah, the only thing, the only other suggestion or comment I would make is just maybe not limit it to just the Douglas County Housing Partnership. I think there's probably a lot of good resources that could provide input. Some of the other jurisdictions, having been a little further along in this process than us, there might be a resource as well. So with that, thank you, Kristin. I think it is an exciting way to start off 2021. We're going to go back to the tired old story of 2020 later in the study session, but for now, we got new stuff, so it's good. Okay, moving on, there is another exciting presentation this evening about the Lone Tree Arts Center and an update on really the exciting whirlwind year that they have had, everything under the sun with our, starting with our executive director, Lisa Rigsman-Petersen. Lisa, Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mayor. Same to you as well as to other members of Council. It's my pleasure this evening to present a 2020 department update for Lone Tree Arts Center as well as our city events. It's been a long year. You know, I'll share a lot of facts and figures with you as we go through the presentation, but I really think that images of this year tell a very powerful story. So you'll see a lot of them in this approximately 18-minute presentation. You know, there's a very popular meme online right now, and the next slide shows the LTAC version of this meme. How it started, where it's going. On the left, you see the Choir of Man. Some of you actually might be on that stage getting free beer from the cast. It's hard to tell. But in the first quarter of 2020, we were firing on all cylinders. We had sold out shows, the best first quarter in ticket sales in our history, and we were putting the finishing touches on what would have been our 10th anniversary season. On the right, well, that's how the year ended for us. We had six people in the building as we did one of our holiday live streams. A lot happened in between how it started and how it ended. So on the next slide, we're going to take a quick stroll down memory lane. Does anyone remember that we did this? The 25th anniversary family celebration. Look at how people were packed into the art center to celebrate our 25th anniversary. They're having fun, eating cake and cookies and popcorn. And on the next slide, you'll see that members of Council, past and present, were having a great time, too. Where are the masks? Where's the social distancing? None of that was in sight. We were all just gathered together to celebrate the city and make our residents feel good.
We looked so much younger.
Don't we all? You know, a few short weeks later, everything changed, and you and the city manager became laser focused on how the city staff could support our community, make them feel safe, reassured, and hopeful. And it reminded me of a quote that I think really resonates that you'll see on this next slide. Maya Angelou said, "I've learned that people will forget what you said, people will forget what you did, but people will never forget how you made them feel." So our work in March and early April became not just about picking up the art centerpieces, but also about making our community feel and be better. The next slide shows our first step. Late in March, Mayor Malley, you asked me if we could create a sign to thank the workers at Sky Ridge and encourage them. Mallory, Dawn, and Paul installed this very simple yet powerful message in a building across the street from the medical center. It was just a start, though, as every single LTAC employee took on additional roles on city task forces to join our colleagues in COVID response. Gratefully, our first initiative, as you see on the next slide, took off like a rocket. Lone Tree Feeds between April and May began with a small group of community volunteers who wanted to support Lone Tree Restaurants, show support for our first responders and frontline workers. And with the great help of Elaine Karas, whom you see here, this program made a huge impact. 177 donors, mostly Lone Tree residents, donated over $33,000, and we were able to have 2,747 meals delivered to frontline workers, including those, as you see, at Sky Ridge, South Metro Fire, and our own police department. At the same time that the Lone Tree Feeds project was happening, many of our Lone Tree Essential businesses were in dire need of PPE, particularly masks, which is strange to think about now since you can get them sort of in a bubble gum machine. But our next initiative was to launch the mask-making projects. Here are some of the grateful beneficiaries and volunteers involved. Kami Brereton was heading a mask-making project on the PED side. So Robin Skurdo, pictured here, led a small army of volunteers in an effort to help our local businesses. Our 40-plus volunteers, many of whom were Lone Tree Arts Center ushers, Lone Tree Arts Center staff, city staff, and some community representatives, made over 1,000 masks, and we delivered those masks to over 39 essential businesses, helping to keep those workers safe. At the same time that we were equipping those essential businesses with PPE, other LTAC team members were joining forces with Jeff Hallwell and his Economic Recovery and Resilience Team. As you can see on this slide, Michelle, Ashley Bailey and Katie helped create timely and important communication tools for our Lone Tree businesses. Michelle's long history as a corporate strategist and communicator really came in handy. To date, over 20 newsletters and communications have kept our businesses informed and engaged. Later in the summer, Elaine and Alyssa joined Jeff and helped produce five Lone Tree Business Alliance Zoom meetings and arrange the delivery of 40 igloos for winter cheer. As we were also meeting these important business needs, our staff was also focused on pressing community needs, as you'll see on the next slide. Proudly following in Chris Cooper's footsteps, Alyssa arranged six Vitalin blood drives at the art center, which engaged 361 donors, including our city manager, whom you see donating blood here. All of our donors donated enough blood products to save nearly 1,100 lives, and 81 of those donors were Lone Tree and nearby community first-time donors, which really astonished the folks at Vitalin that we had so many first-time donors. Even during this external focus, we were also focused internally, supporting you as you communicated and conducted city business, starting in April. On this slide, you see a couple of screenshots from virtual city council meetings. I understand that Tyler and Jay have received calls from other jurisdictions asking how the city so professionally produces its virtual county meetings, sorry, council meetings. And the answer is those two fellows in the bottom-left corner, Chris and Dawn, shown here in the lower-left, their work was critical and it really helped inform and support not only your work, but one of our big growth areas last year. The next slide helps show you how we pivoted from in-person to virtual delivery for our performances. In May, as soon as the stay-at-home orders were lifted, our team got to work training themselves to be video producers. Chris, Paul, and Jen, seen in action here, Paul's actually holding a camera right next to the piano on stage, along with Dawn, were instrumental in allowing us to take just a two-month break from performances, which to me is pretty amazing. And it proved especially important for our vulnerable senior patrons who have enthusiastically embraced our live streams and our virtual arts in the afternoon series. And at the same time that they were learning the ropes and acquiring and integrating that new equipment, the rest of our art center staff, in addition to our ongoing task force work, was working nonstop so that when we were allowed to, we could open our doors again to live audiences as quickly as possible. It was a race to understand, synthesize, and implement new rules and protocols. We had to figure out how we'd safely scan tickets, serve drinks, manage bathroom lines, and train our volunteers in front of house staff. This is a visual representation of some of the complexities involved. The rules and the guidance changed several times in short periods of time, from social distancing calculators to distances needed between artists and audiences. A big thanks to Bill Medina for his help over the last many months. We had to order new supplies for the building, decals and hand sanitizer and air filters. Big thanks to Justin Russell for always being there for us. And we worked with Linda and her staff on many legal aspects. We communicated new rules to our patrons. We engaged artists. We trained on new protocols. Lee was charged with a patron side of communication and also, as you can see, with mask ordering. All of this work took our staff many weeks to get ready for our reopening, but it really paid off because we were really one of the first theaters in the state to reopen to live audiences in July. The next slide is an illustration of the time involved and just one small aspect. Here you see some of the seat maps that we created to accommodate changing capacity and distancing rules. Our seat maps are what we use to sell tickets, and we use these maps in our ticketing system so patrons can select which seats they want. We went through many, many versions. As you can see, we started in April when we thought we were going to be able to have a certain capacity, and we just kept changing it every time the rules changed. We had to create them for inside performances and terrace theater performances and family performances. It took a great deal of time for Ashley and Katie and Lee to work through this. And at the same time that this work was happening, the next slide shows another critical aspect of our pre-opening planning. With deep gratitude to Heidi, who was literally in the middle of this work as well as the middle of the slide, she and I were neck-deep in contracting and budgeting work relating to reopening. This slide, I know, looks like a hot mess, and I tell you that's somehow at times how it felt to us. We revised our 2020 budget five or six times between May and September before we reopened with the great help of Linda and Lori. We had to create liability waivers for our performers and our patrons, create a live streaming contract. We had to create amendments for existing contracts, share new force majeure and COVID clauses, renegotiate contracts, create new contracts, all of the business end of being ready to reopen. But all of it was worth it because, as you can see on the next slide, the art center was able to rebound. Beginning in May, we fought our way back and began programming both virtually and in person. And the next slide shows you how much our patrons appreciated. Here's what those seating maps looked like in real life when we began welcoming audiences back in July. Up top, you'll see the indoor theater and on the bottom, our terrace theater. With the help of Helene and Jim and Sandy and Sharon, our great house managers, and Jean and Roberta in the box office, our entire team played a role in getting us to reopen so quickly and so safely. Meanwhile, as we were working on all of these things, our work for the city didn't stop either, as you can see on the next slide. We had a much different Independence Celebration, Independence Day celebration this year, but it was still a celebration. Alyssa, Elaine, with great help from Denise, distributed 300 bike decoration packets, 100 veteran signs, and collected 50 food donations. In addition to being able to celebrate Independence Day even a little differently, we were able to relaunch our visual art program, as you can see on the next slide. We moved the photo show from March to August, and Alyssa and Paul and our Arts Commission came up with new virtual ways to engage artists and viewers alike. We actually learned a lot from this process, and we're looking forward to continuing to integrate this virtual delivery in all of our visual arts programs moving forward. And the end of the summer also meant that our performances continued as we went along, as demonstrated on the next slide. From August through October, we welcomed in-person and virtual audiences with a variety of shows. We lined up great artists into November and December. We actually ended up presenting 54 performances between our live and in-person performances in 2020, which is a really remarkable number. You know, I'm especially proud that the hard work of our staff and our laser focus on safety meant throughout the summer and fall, we know of zero instances of COVID transmission due to LTAC performances. Early fall, however, was a difficult time at the art center. If you could move to the next slide, please. I'd just like to take a moment to remember our colleague, Ken Fisher. Ken and his wife Bunny were some of our first volunteer ushers in 2011. Ken joined our house management staff five years ago, and he, along with Robin, created the curriculum for and provided the training for our Wellspring Usher Program. You see him here, standing in the back with his jacket at the first graduating, with the first graduating class of our Wellspring Program. We will really all miss Ken very much. Ken passed away on the first day of our LTAC furlough enclosure. And, you know, if I'm being honest, the furloughs were one of the biggest challenges for our staff last year. We felt hurt, we felt anxious, and I think that these are perfectly human and understandable emotions. However, we all understood the reason that the decision was made. And at our first staff meeting back after the closure in early October, I told our staff that our focus moving forward was on the great work that we had accomplished for our community, and the great work that was still ahead of us, and on the promise of better days. It really was the hardest leadership challenge I've ever faced personally, but I have been so proud of how our team has risen to the occasion and continue to and continues to this day to deliver outstanding service and work and commitment. And there was still a lot for us to do, as you can see on the next slide. The art center served as a COVID testing site from September through November until the demand outstripped our capacity. In three months, we had nine testing dates. We estimate over 1,000 tests were administered. And as you can see from these two photos, it was a little bit of a commotion. Big thanks to PD and the CSOs for helping keep that traffic moving. It wasn't all serious. We did have a lot of fun, and as the next slide illustrates, who doesn't like an Oktoberfest? German food, German music contests, fräuleins and beer from Lone Tree Brewery helped 191 mostly Lone Tree residents enjoy a great October day. It was followed the next day by a pumpkin patch at the terrace theater, which, as you can see on the, on this slide, was really gratefully attended by many Lone Tree families who continued their pumpkin patch tradition. Our staff also participated in what I hope is a new Lone Tree tradition on Halloween weekend, which you'll see on the next slide. The city had two drive-through trick-or-treat sites. And while Councilmember Carpenter held down the fort at the Kimber Building, we were lucky enough to have Mayor Malley help us distribute candy at the art center. On the next slide, we can see families really getting into the spirit, sometimes more than their kids. And on the right-hand side, you can see Mallory Hart's great spider candy shooter. It only made two children cry and maybe three of the staff members, but other than that, it was good. We have no idea how many people attended because we all stressed out about running out of candy early in the event, and that stress was compounded when I ran over to Target and bought the last three bags of candy they had. It was a great way to end October because, as the next slide illustrates, everything was about to change again. I think, you know, I think really that this is the most appropriate image for our staff's workflow for the entire year of 2020. In November, COVID cases began rising, and Douglas County went through a pretty quick dizzying series of moves on the COVID dial. Between October 20th and November 17th, in an 18-day period, we went from 125-person capacity to 100, to 50, to zero. We had to postpone seven December in-person shows and move to live streaming. And then in mid-December, we were advised that Tri-County didn't think we were allowed to livestream. Luckily, this came after our livestream, well, I'm sorry, then two weeks after that, we were told we had to apply for a variance to livestream. But luckily, that news came after our last livestream of the year. We think we've moved through this with new moves on the dial and our, I'm proud to say, brand spanking new five-star certification, which we received this morning. Great thanks to Paul and to Bill and our staff for attaining that certification. But to say that the last two months of the year were probably the most stressful is not an understatement. After we picked ourselves off, up off of this roller coaster, on the next slide, you can see that, once again, we rebounded. We helped our community and seniors celebrate the holiday season in a variety of ways, including those livestream performances. And on the next slide, some safe in-person traditions, too. We were so happy to offer our third annual sensory-friendly Santa experience to local families. Thirty-six attendees, including 20 children, came to talk to Santa, get their photos taken with him, and as you see on the next slide, receive small presents from him. When I contacted Santa Dwight, who was our Santa last year, to ask him to return, he told me that he was so moved by his experience last year that he wondered if it would be okay if he brought small presents for the children. Well, they were stuffed animals, and it was a huge hit. You can see some of the elves who helped make the event possible on the right, including Paul and Michelle and Austin, who actually literally dressed like an elf later in the evening, I think. We consider Austin an honorary member of our LTAC staff. And on the next slide, you can see some images of some very happy Lone Tree families and staff members with their families, celebrating the Lone Tree Arts Center holiday photos and drive-through experiences. Alyssa did a great job organizing this celebration. And as you can see from the next slide, the art center looked beautiful on the right-hand side. It was lit and decorated by the genius of our Assistant Technical Director, Jen Kaiser. She's seen here with Elaine and Dawn. Photo on top is our staff who worked the event, some recognizable, some not. It was a really great way to end the year. We were helping our residents feel good. We had 57 families at photo sessions, 80 families at the drive-through, who made 100 cards, which we delivered to Morningstar residents, and we collected 65 toys for the Hope and Help Center. So we've seen a lot of images, but as I come to the end of my presentation, I do have a slide full of facts and figures for you. As you can see on the next slide, even with everything else on their plates, our As you can see on the next slide, even with everything else on their plates, our outstanding development team created great fundraising successes this year. In midsummer, Michelle proposed to the LTAC Fund Board that it create a challenge campaign. And the Set the Stage Campaign was born. Like most things last year, Michelle and Robin had to lead a several hands-on-deck effort involving our marketing team and many, many others to really launch this professional campaign. The goal for the campaign was $180,000. With generosity from many of you, from city staff, from LTAC staff, from ushers, and so many of our loyal donors and patrons, we actually raised over $231,000. Over the year, we engaged 455 new donors, which is an amazing number. And I can promise you that almost all of them got a personal thank you call from Robin. The Lone Tree Art Center Fund Board has proven to be a strong fundraising arm for us. Over just the last two years, they've raised a little over $130,000 and there are great things to come from that group. Our retention rate for corporate donors in 2020, which was so difficult for businesses, was 80%, a great testament to the value proposition that Michelle shares with our corporate donors. Our original 2020 fundraising goal, not a revised goal, but our original goal was $675,200. Actual funds raised, and believe me, we keep running to the mailbox to check, to see if there are any last-minute checks in there. And this figure comes from Robin. We have raised $674,980.15. Really, really great year. Briefly, I know you're wondering, what's next? What is 2021 going to bring? Well, our work really is going to be governed by what you see on the next, on this slide. Public health orders, capacity restrictions, and the COVID dial. I can assure you that the same drive that we've demonstrated throughout the last 10 months to return to in-person programming as quickly as humanly possible has not diminished. Meantime, on the next slide, we have lined up some program for 2021. We've lined up a Nat Geo Live Virtual Speaker Series. And as the photo of the calendars on my office over to my left indicates, we have a lot of things cooking for 2021 and 2022. So a lot more to come and hopefully to come very quickly. My second-to-last slide brings us back to the beginning of the presentation, how it started and how it's going. At the end of fiscal year 2019, the Lone Tree staff generated an operating surplus of $329,000, which really became critical budget support this year as the general fund allocation had to be reduced. I'm really proud to let you know that we will end this year with another operating surplus. How much I can't precisely tell you yet, but we'll be able to share that figure with you very soon. And I think that these numbers are just testament to the indomitable spirit of our staff and their hard work. My final reflection on 2020 for the Art Center staff and our city event staff that I'd like to share with you comes from a conversation that was started by Guild members and Mayor Malay at the Guild Holiday Zoom Party. They were all expressing how much the Art Center meant to them, how much they were missing everything about the experience of being here. And an image came into my head that you see or hear on this slide. I made the following observation on that call, and it was this. Lone Tree doesn't have a Main Street, but it does have a heartbeat. And I think in 2020, the Lone Tree Art Center, along with the Kimmer Building, were two of the places that those heartbeats were heard the loudest. Our staff couldn't be prouder than to be part of the heart of Lone Tree. And we have been so grateful for your support, the support of our colleagues, our patrons, and our donors. Here is to a much, much, much better 2021. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions or hear any comments you might have.
Thanks so much, Lisa. Your outstanding leadership during what was a very challenging year for all of us. And I can certainly appreciate the position that you were in through most of it. And I think I have done a tremendous job just demonstrating really the breadth and depth of the response to the pandemic, the flexibility, the resiliency, the perseverance of the staff at the Lone Tree Art Center. And I know I speak on behalf of all of Council, just the deepest gratitude and our residents to you and your team for the tremendous work you did in the face of very, very challenging odds. And I think, as we've all learned this year, the reserves have become a very important word for all of us. And I think as we look to the future of the city of Lone Tree, I think we all recognize the importance of, of having those reserves, not just fiscally, but emotionally and with our fortitude as well to confront the challenge, challenges that none of us really could have anticipated. So I want to give Council a chance to say their, to express their gratitude and really so impressed with, again, the depth and breadth of the work that was done. So I'm going to turn it to the Mayor Pro Tem right now, and I'm quickly going to step away. My daughter is leaving to go to college. She just stuck her head in my room. I'm going to run out the door and give her a kiss. So Mayor Pro Tem, you take over for a minute for me, will you?
You got it. Thanks, Jackie. So let me just add my thanks, Lisa, to your entire staff. You know, I work as well and understand that in a year like this, people have been asked to do all kinds of interesting things as part of their job. And I know that with that comes a gratitude for still getting to work, right? Like, there's so many of our colleagues who are just not in that position. So my kudos to the city staff and to you as a leader in figuring out how to deploy in ways that ended up being unbelievably meaningful to our residents in a year that I think we probably needed that more than ever. I told Jackie this story, but I bought my parents, who are in their 80s, streaming for the Do-Op project and became a technical support wizard there, getting them all set up onto this. I had it onto a pill speaker and like it filled the house and it brought my father to tears.
It was just so beautiful. So I'm very grateful for that work because I think this year for them has been awful. And the work you do there touched him in a way that maybe changed his year. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Thank you.
And maybe Wynne could go next?
Sure. And Lisa, thank you to you and your team. I, I think the measure of success is a lot to do with your ability to keep changing as the environment changed and the rules changed around you. Not only did you make a difference for the people in this community and give opportunities for your staff and for the volunteers to be part of something positive, but you allowed the artists to perform. And I definitely got from them how important it is for them to perform for an audience and to, it didn't matter how big the audience was either. It was just that they could hear the applause and feel the love. So for sharing the love with the vast community of performers and audiences, I thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Carpenter.
Yeah, Lisa, to you and then the whole staff. Man, what a, what a year. Think about last January, if we would be asking, well, Robin's going to be making a bunch of masks, Elaine's going to be in charge of Lone Tree Feeds, and Paul and Alyssa are going to be working on virtual experiences, we'd all think we're all crazy. So, but I applaud you all in your ability to be flexible, creative, and thinking outside the box. And to your point about the heartbeat, you know, while we did have reduced capacity for sure, the natural numbers and the sheer volume of folks who went through the Art Center, not like a normal year, but I think the impact that we made was huge and resounding. So great work. You know, who knows what's going to be in store for 2021? I acknowledge that a lot of that is out of your control and out of our control, but if we can keep staying flexible and creative and persevere, and I hate, you know, the word pivot's always overused this past year, but I think it's, it's the perfect word for that. So, you know, we look forward to buckling up and enjoying the ride for this year, for sure. But thanks for all your work and creativity, for sure. It's appreciated.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of Council. Your words mean more than you could know.
And I'm going to close, at least, with saying that the cities, I could not be prouder of the city's response to this COVID pandemic and the good work of the entire Lone Tree staff and team was essential to that effort. And I know that the Art Center's team really was probably the most resilient in all of it, and that has not gone unnoticed. And we so very much appreciate the work that you did and really want to shout from the rooftops that the response from the city could not have been what it was without the Lone Tree Art Center team. So thank you again for, for your great work and their great work. All right. So, and I think the common theme is it's not going to be 2020, it will definitely be better next year. So I think we, we've learned a lot and I think you've got the seating maps out for every possible scenario, God help us if there's a different one. So we're, we are ready to go and we'll hit the ground running in 2021. Okay, moving on to, I go, the arts to the outdoors. I love, I love this agenda so far. We're going to do an overview of our Southwest Village Parks Master Plan, and Austin Good, Assistant to the City Manager, is going to start off, I believe, or no, maybe it's Rashana Floyd with our Community Development. Rashana, is it you?
It is, yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. But Austin is here as well, so he is here to chime in on any additional comments or notes. It has been a large process for us and Austin has been seeing us through. So I am going to just give a brief overview of what a park master plan is. Next slide, please, Jay. So just to bring everyone, dial them in to our Southwest Village Plan and our sub-area plan, more specifically for the East Villages. Section 7.2 of that plan requires that each village have a park master plan associated with it prior to the first final plat. And that is to provide a conceptual of the neighborhood park system. It is to provide, again, a general overview. It's not going to dial in specifically to each individual furnishing or to specific layouts, but it's essentially the twin of a preliminary plan for a residential development. Next slide, please. All right. So the park planning process. For this park master plan, I do want to be very clear and to iterate that when this park master plan is approved, that will go into the planning documents for this development area. And then each individual neighborhood park site will come through the Planning Division with a site improvement plan application. However, those site improvement plan applications will be approved administratively, provided that they adhere to the park master plan concept. So each individual SIP will not go out to individual public meetings. They will just go through a smaller referral process and then they will have administrative review. So as we go through this park planning process, it has been a very collaborative process. We have worked very closely with Austin's lead, with South Suburban Park and Recreation District, and with, of course, the Citizen Recreation Advisory Committee as well. So it's been a great team effort. It's gone through application and referrals. We have had input from the Planning Commission, as well as from the South Suburban Park and Recreation Board of Directors. And then we did have a formal recommendation by the city's Recreation Advisory Committee to City Council. So you will see that at your next full and regular meeting. All right, may I have the next slide, please? So quick overview of our governing regulations and plans. We always start with the big kahuna, the comprehensive plan, the annexation and development agreement, the sub-area plan for the East Villages. And then this time, we're also looking at the master plan addendum for Ridge Gate East for the South Suburban Park and Recreation District. So that gives us some additional guidelines as to what we should be looking for in these park master plans. May I have the next slide, please? So again, big picture overview of what we're looking at. We will cover briefly open space and trail connectivity, but these components are not formally in the park master plan. The park master plan specifically is going to look at the neighborhood park sites. And we have three of those. We have Park A, B, and C, that will be renamed at a later date, of course. Those also are supplemented by our over 200 acres of public open space, six and a half miles of public trails, a private recreation center that will be built out, as well as the regional park site. So with the exception of the private recreation center, the open space, as well as the neighborhood park sites and the regional park site, will be maintained by South Suburban Park and Recreation once the parks are built, constructed, and accepted by the city. Trail maintenance will vary, as you saw through the Southwest Village Preliminary Plan. There are different segments that have different maintenance, maintenance authorities associated with them. And then, of course, the regional park, as we like to mention, is just now beginning very preliminary design phases. So we will see additional public input with that process, but that construction is still some time out and we have no set schedule for that. Next slide, please. So quick overview of our site. I do want to note here, you will see under the notes, under the Shea Homes logo, there is a reference to a minimum open space requirement. There is no minimum open space requirement for this particular village. That is a component that is identified in the sub-area plan as an estimate for this village, but there is not a minimum specific to this village. So again, this village has met all of its requirements for public dedications and open space requirements. So in this site overview, you will see the regional park up at the top, and then you will see on the left-hand side, Neighborhood Park A, directly adjacent to the school site. Then in the middle, you will see the Village Recreation and Amenity Center. That is the private center we mentioned. And then moving further to the east, you will see Park B, that is directly adjacent to the Regional Commuter Trail. And then on the far right-hand side, to the east, you will see Neighborhood Park C, that is adjacent to the Badger Gulch Corridor. Next slide, please. So this is, again, just the overview, large picture of the trail connectivity. So you can see that we have a number of trail spurs that are interspersed throughout the open space area and that all of the proposed park sites have full connectivity to these trail systems. Next slide, please. So now we're going to break down just the general overview of each individual park site. Again, each park will have its own separate SIP that will be administratively approved. And that, at that time, we will look at the very specific requirements with South Suburban Park and Recreation relative to trail surfaces that are inside the park area, relative to specific landscaping, tree placement, shade structures, playground design. That's when those details will be lined out. So this is just the conceptual rendering to give a overall character and feel for each individual park. So this park is proposed to have joint use with the school site due to its adjacency, and that is actually going to be a requirement of the school site, as was discussed with the Southwest Village Preliminary Plan. It is also adjacent to the regional park site. So for this particular component, you will see that there is on-street parking available. There is trail connectivity to the regional park. You will see a small practice athletic field adjacent to the school site. And then you will also see a one-to-five-year-old playground, as well as a five-to-12-year-old playground, and a shade structure, shade sales, and there is the picnic shelter as well. So it has a variety of programming that is proposed for this particular site. And that is a, just over six acres for Park A. All right, if I may have the next slide, please? So this is Park A. This is the largest neighborhood park in the development. It comes in at over 12 acres. As I mentioned, it is adjacent to the Regional Commuter Trail. That is also the overhead power line that comes through, that has a very large easement underneath that. And that trail placement has been identified since the sub-area plan for the East Villages. This particular park has onsite parking, as well as some available on-street parking. And it also has a number of basketball courts potentially, or pickleball courts. That remains to be seen, but there are certainly some sport courts that it has room for. There's also active open space, some additional sitting areas, picnic shelters, shade structures, playgrounds, and a large expanse of open space that can be programmed. One of the proposals is to have a small cycle track. So when we go through our full presentation with City Council in the formal and regular meeting, meeting, the applicant will be presenting the full details of this programming, and they will dig into more of those details in a more minute fashion. This is the primary overview for you. We have had a request to include some programming that serves the teen population. This is one site, due to its size, it's larger, that this site may accommodate that. So, that is one discussion item in those series of meetings that was proposed, and you will see that reflected, of course, in your staff report that has the variety of minutes from those meetings as well. If I may have the next slide, please? Now, this will bring us to Park C. So, this park is adjacent to Badger Gulch. This is intended to be more of a passive park, because it is very close to many of the natural amenities. So, you will see native seed. You will see that it has some overlook points to look over into the Badger Gulch Corridor. This park has on-street parking, does not have onsite parking, and it also has an outdoor exercise area that is programmed, as well as some informational kiosks as well. So, this site is just under 10 acres. The interior trail is currently called out as crusher finds. That may be amended to be a hard-surface trail that is more in line with South Suburban Park and Recreation District guidelines for their neighborhood parks for interior boundaries. May I have the next slide, please? All right, so this particular location is the Village Recreation and Amenities Center. Again, this is the private center. This is where the pool and clubhouse will be located, does have ample onsite parking available. It also has trail connectivity, as well as some lawn space, and, of course, proposals for ample landscaping as well. It is possible that you will see slight changes to this particular plan as part of the density transfer for the preliminary plan. So, it is possible that a couple of lots may be removed to expand this site slightly to accommodate some additional parking and some additional lawn area possibly. And again, all of those components will be covered in full detail when the applicant presents the application at the regular meeting. This site will be maintained by the Homeowners Association for the Development. This will not be maintained by South Suburban, as it is a private site. And if I may have the next slide, please? All right, so we did want to provide just a very basic conceptual map of existing dog parks in the area. This was perhaps one of the most predominant comments that arose from the series of meetings that we held with Planning Commission, as well as with the Citizens Recreation Advisory Committee, relative to dog park access for the Southwest Village residents, and the number of canine residents that it is anticipated to have. And again, this will be open for discussion when we get to the full and regular council meeting on this application, but staff wanted to just call out some general locations. Up by the end-of-the-line RTD station on South Havana Street, there is a South Station Park that is part of the city center plan. With the Ridge Gate Station Apartment SIP that you saw, there was a local park called out for that location. And in that local park, it is proposed that there will be a small dog amenity area. So, that particular location relative to Southwest Village is between 3/4 of a mile and 1 and 1/2 miles away, depending on what phase of the village you are in. And then, in addition to that site, you have Glendale Open Space, which is a Douglas County Park, and that has ample dog space as well. And again, with connectivity from our trail systems, depending on which route you take and which portion of the Southwest Village you are in, it is approximately 2 and 1/2 to 3 and 1/2 miles to that particular open space area that also can accommodate dogs and ample running space for canines. So, with that said, if I may have the next slide, please? All right, now, we'll give a brief overview of the phasing and discuss how these neighborhood parks will be constructed. So, you have seen this phasing map previously with the Southwest Village Preliminary Plan, and as we discussed at that time, each individual neighborhood park, as well as the open space and trails, will be developed within that phase. So, the neighborhood parks will be constructed by the master developer. They will be maintained by South Suburban Park and Recreation, and they will be owned by the city, again, with the exception of that private recreation center. So, the trigger for park development within each phase is that when each phase has reached a threshold of having 40% of building permits issued, the developer will then submit the SIP for the neighborhood park. And then, at 50% of those building permits being issued, the developer will commence construction of that neighborhood park. And then, we will look to have that construction completed within 18 months' time from that SIP being approved for construction for that neighborhood park. So, that gives you a general overview of when those parks will go into play. And you can see from the phasing here, you have the Private Recreation and Amenities Center is in Phase 1, along with Neighborhood Park B, which is also in Phase 1. Then, you have for Phase 2, Park A, and then finally, you will have Park C in Phase 4. And if I may have the next slide, please? Just a quick overview, you have seen this as well, the density and population projections for the Southwest Village, but we use these numbers directly to calculate the park dedication requirements for each village, and the Private Recreation and Amenities Center provided a 25% credit, or essentially 3/4 of an acre credit. So, with that said, the developer, again, as we discussed in the preliminary plan, has met all of their neighborhood park dedication requirements for the Southwest Village. And if I may have the next slide, please, Jay? Thank you. Okay, a quick overview of the project referral process for the park master plan. As I mentioned, we had additional collaboration from South Suburban Park and Recreation District, as well as Public Works and our mobility planning team. This particular application was out on referral for 21 days. It went out on referral to over 16 agencies. We received 15 formal responses that resulted in three resubmittals, and those resubmittals have resulted essentially in changes to design suggestions. But currently, of course, since this is just an overview, we do not have formal conditions of approval for you. Those have yet to be developed, if there will be any developed at all. If I may have the next slide, please? So, based on the feedback that staff received from the Planning Commission, the South Suburban Park and Recreation District Board of Directors, as well as the formal recommendations from the Citizens Recreation Advisory Committee, staff is making three basic recommendations for amenities in each neighborhood park. These were items that stood out, again, throughout those discussions. We continually received the question of restrooms. When looking at these conceptuals, you noted that there were no restrooms shown on the plans. Now, in consultation with South Suburban Park and Recreation District, and as you know here in the city of Lone Tree, there are many parks that do not have fully plumbed restrooms. That, of course, is based on capacity, size, cost, and many other factors go into play. But it is feasible that a portable restroom could be put in place with an enclosure similar to Belvedere Park. So, that is one recommendation that staff is making because of the size of the Southwest Village, and because it is a residential development, we feel it is very important that each park have, at minimum, a portable restroom. We also recommend dogway stations, and we also recommend wheelchair-accessible picnic tables. I also want to note that all three of these recommendations for neighborhood park amenities have been discussed with the developer, as well as with Ridge Gate. And to date, it is our understanding that there are no large concerns over these three recommendations. If I may have the next slide, please? So, now, we are at next steps. Here, we are proposing council action at the January 19th meeting, and if that is approved, we will go then into development of the Southwest Village. And when we reach those thresholds and those triggers based on the phasing of the building permits, then we will have that SIP submittal. Each SIP will still go out on public referral. It will still go out to our agencies and our partners. It will still have full consultation and collaboration with South Suburban Park and Recreation District, and it will still have to be in adherence with this park master plan once it is approved. It will just not go to individual public meetings for each individual SIP. And once it goes through that submittal and referral process, then it will have SIP approval, and that will be administratively approved by the Community Development Director. And from there, it then moves on to the phase of grading permits and building permits for any structures that may require them. And with that said, may I have the final slide, please? Thank you very much for allowing us to provide this overview. I do want to provide Austin a moment to chime in with any additional notes that I may have overlooked that are important to this presentation. So, Austin, please do chime in if I missed something that you would like to cover.
You know, Rashana, you covered it perfectly, and I do want to, real quick, I think Rashana really deserves a lot of props, not just for this effort, but also with the preliminary plan for the Southwest Village. I think we're really, really lucky that she joined the city staff when she did, because she's been rocking all of these efforts, so I want to give her a quick shout out. And again, just a little background about why, you know, we're bringing this to the council for this study session. You know, this is going to be proposed by the developer. The developer will come in during the next council meeting to talk a lot more in-depth about each of the park concepts and their design intent, and how they connect to the broader community. But if there are any kind of big glaring things that you think are missing, or anything that you want to make sure that the developer addresses at the council meeting, we'd love to hear those and be able to pass those along at this meeting. And we also wanted to be sure that we're giving you a good overview of this process. This is the first time the city is doing a neighborhood park planning process like this, with a master plan like this. So, if there's any process questions that we can address, be sure to let us know, or if there's even improvements that you see that we can make for the next villages to come, we'd love to hear that as well. So, we wanted to just kind of give you an opportunity, because this is a big part of a big development, to let us know if there's any initial feedback, initial response, with in mind that at the next council meeting, the developer will be on hand to go much more in-depth with their design intent.
Thank you, Austin.
Jack, you're on mute. I just said thank you, Rashana, for a great presentation, and thank you, Austin, for your work on this effort as well. I want to just, I assume, Rashana, we're now opening it up to council. Do you have anything else? Are we opening up for council comments, questions?
Absolutely. Council comments, questions, with the caveat that deep-dive discussions should probably be tabled to the full application review.
Wonderful, thanks. And I am going to just start off with a general comment that I have regarding the process. This, as you know, Lone Tree is one community in one city, and as we've added amenities, they aren't being added just for one segment of the city. They're being added for the entire breadth of the city. The rec center that is sited in the Ridge Gate West Village is a recreation center that serves not just the city of Lone Tree, but far beyond the boundaries of that. And so, as I look at this master plan, I don't look at it in the context of just serving the Southwest Village. So, I'm particularly commenting on the distances to the dog parks and dog amenities. I think what we've heard loud and clear from our residents continually is they're looking for a dog park or a place where they can safely bring their dogs, and I appreciate that there's going to be a small dog amenity at that one park. But I guess what I see as a real glaring error or omission is an area really to serve the folks in our community, not just the Southwest Village, but the people that live in our city that are looking for dog parks. And it sounds like you heard that loud and clear throughout this process from others, and I guess I'm just echoing those comments. I have some additional comments, but really, I'm going to let council speak, but I wanted to set the tone for my comments, and I think the way we should be looking at this, as this is a park amenity that's going to be serving beyond the Southwest Village, just like all of our parks. When my children were young, we visited all the parks in the city of Lone Tree and beyond the borders, and not just the neighborhood park that was built for my residential development. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Councilmember Carpenter.
Great, yeah, great presentation, Rashana, so thanks very much. And I also wanted to thank the input from the Citizens Recreation Committee, as well as our partners in South Suburban for all of their input. I know that when we looked at all of these sites, the topography challenge is a real thing, and so I know we've got to, again, get somewhat creative on how we come up with these concepts, but I do like adding some flexibility for recreation amenities that we hadn't planned for in the past, such as, you know, you mentioned cycle track or pickleball, and who knows when, in reality, when these parks will be built and what other activities will be really popular then. So, going into it with some flexibility, I think, is important. I like the phasing plan a lot, and I'll make some comments on restrooms. So, as a parent of four kids, I think restrooms at a park are way more important than the actual playground equipment. And I do, and we hear it left and right in terms of folks wanting more access to dog parks, and I don't know, maybe that's something we consider over closer to Ruder Hess, and I know there's the Glendale Park that's great, but if we could have something there, because as Mayor mentioned, this isn't just going to be for that just part of Lone Tree. It's for the whole region at large. So, to be planning ahead in time, in terms of that.
And Councilmember, would you be okay if I jumped in real quick?
Yeah, of course.
A little more on dog parks as well? Because I think that's a really big priority, and especially in these denser parts of the city, one of the lessons learned, even looking at the Lincoln Station area and Heritage Hill, you know, just in all of our kind of large-scale developments, that's been a missing piece. One thing to also keep in mind in this area is the regional park, which is going to take up the entire western border of this development and really serve the community at large. We haven't gotten down into the, we haven't committed any programming for that space yet. The city and South Suburban are undergoing that design effort as we speak, but that's definitely been a concept that we've been tossing around and something that we're keeping as a priority for the regional park as well. So, thinking about the scale of dog park, and if it fits into a neighborhood park or the regional park, that's definitely something that we'll keep in mind as we're moving through that design process. And if council has any feedback about whether they think it's a neighborhood park amenity or regional park amenity, we'd love to hear that as well.
Great, no, thanks, Austin. Yeah, and then my last comment too is, I know, Rashana, you mentioned they're eventually going to change the name, but if we have Pond H, I think we could still keep Park A, right?
Absolutely.
Great, thanks. That's it for me.
Thanks, Jay. Councilmember Shaw, any thoughts?
I would actually be very comfortable having some sort of fenced dog park where dogs can run free in the regional park. It really might, at least in my mind, be a better fit, but I do think it's important as the plans for these parks start to work their way into the public purview that we're able to say there is a commitment to a dog park of such size at approximately the same time, because I do think that residents need places for their dogs to run, and especially with smaller lots, it's very hard, I think, to feel good about owning particularly a large dog in some of the areas. So, that was a good observation by the mayor and Councilmember Carpenter. If, yeah, I think that these parks look very nice, and they'll fit in with the neighborhoods, and hopefully that the neighborhoods will be able to walk to them, and so the needs for parking, except for Park B, will be sufficient on the street. So, they look good to me. Thank you.
Thanks, Winn. Mayor Protem Brannick.
Just a couple comments. A few things that I'll wait for our next meeting for, because they're a little bit more detailed in the park conceptual design itself, but I will say a couple things. What's great about the work What's great about the work that you all have done and I'm very grateful for is seeing it more comprehensively. I think it's easy to see a, you know, one small park and think, hey, that's really great. But when we're looking at it more holistically, both this and the regional park together with a full platitude of delivery is really important. And so I just, we're entrusting you in making sure we kind of get the spectrum of different amenities across those parks. So I'm really grateful for that. And on the dog part comment, being a cat lover, I don't deal with such things. But I will say that what we know to be true is that if there isn't a spot for such things, dog owners typically will find a spot locally that works. We're seeing that right now at the ball field there in Ridge Gate, that that's become kind of a pseudo dog park because it just became a place where people could go and safely have their dogs get out because they need that desperately. So if we don't plan for it, we can be assured that we will, not us, but councils of the future will be dealing with that need erupting in some other way inside the city. So, you know, as much as we can be doing upfront to make sure that that's not a problem that we have moving forward in this more dense environment is much appreciated for sure.
And no feline park then, Kath?
It'd be fun to watch, wouldn't it? But yeah, not super practical.
Yeah, try and get them in the car.
So, thank you. Thank you, Kathy. I'm looking through my notes and I'm trying to come up, find this, and I'm not going to find it. But it's the trend coming for 2021, and it's a Norwegian term. And I can't find the word. But basically it says in 2021, we're going to be embracing feeling the good air and being outside and looking. Do you guys, if somebody can find that crazy word, it's feel something. But I believe that even more thought needs to go in to the recreation and park amenities that we are going to be offering in the future of the city. I think one of the reasons that our residents voted to annex this land in 1999 was the idea that to expand on the amenities that were able to be offered to the community. And I don't think they're going to be satisfied with the idea that we're kicking something down the road when it's something that has been loudly and clearly and consistently asked for in the community. And when we shared with them, great comment, and it is something that is going to be contemplated. Well, the great thing we have is on the east side, we now have this opportunity to expand the offerings. And then we don't clearly identify in a park master plan what, where that's going to be. I think it's a miss on us, and I think it's us not listening to the people that we serve. So I am not comfortable with the comment that, oh, we'll handle that at the regional park level. And I think our mayor Protem was absolutely accurate when she spoke about that it will be created for us if we do not create it. And particularly in a park, I would say the parks approaching, you know, is it Park C that's approaching 10 acres? And Park B that's over 12 acres. And I think Park B is the logical place in my mind to have some kind of a dog amenity. Even, and not a small amenity, a decent sized space. What I have, as I've gotten older, you know, for me, when I was younger, it was all about my children and couldn't agree with Councilmember Carpenter more. Restrooms were more important than anything else. I could bring toys to a green field, but I needed a restroom. So I'm so pleased with staff's recommendation on that. But just the way we love our children, our pet owners love their pets. And I think we need to listen to them. And so we've got playgrounds designed for one to five year olds, and we've got playgrounds designed for the five to 12 year olds. I think the comment about looking for amenities for teens is really good as well. I think there was discussion, and again, it's specifics, about basketball courts and the versatility of those courts being used for different things in the morning. I love all that, but I really think we need a dog. And I don't even own a dog, but I've been hearing loud and clear, we need a place for the puppies in the city of Lone Tree. They need their space too. And so that is my comment. I have another question about just accessibility. I think the planning commission comment regarding accessibility of the picnic tables is wonderful. Are these, and I know the playground that is associated with the rec center is as an accessible playground. Are the playgrounds that are going to be going in accessible playgrounds or have accessible amenities for all levels of ability, physical ability? Is that true or not true?
So that is a level of detail that has not been discussed yet. But I would recommend as council considers what is primarily important for these various sites, that if that is something that the city would like to see, those can all be added into the park master plan as notes. And then when staff is reviewing individual site improvement plans, we then are checking off, okay, accessibility as defined by the park master plan by, you know, A, B, and C. And we're checking off dog waste stations or restroom amenities. Those would be things that we would recommend that council look at as, in terms of a policy decision.
And then I would then suggest adding that because in my mind, what I've learned through doing this for a number of years, universal design works for everybody. It works for the youngest of us, to the oldest of us, to those of us on crutches or limited in their physical abilities. So the idea of having parks that are accessible to ages and abilities, I think, is an important element. So I would suggest that be a policy addition that I would recommend. And then I know there was some discussion about artificial turf, and it's not happening with the neighborhood parks. I would like just staff to educate me a little bit more about artificial turf. And evidently I read it's come a long way in the last five years. I, you know, I need to understand, we don't have artificial turf. And I'd like to understand South Suburban's experience in working with artificial turf as we look at the regional park and if it is going to be an element of the regional park. And then the other comment I had is what we all know is we plan and God laughs, right? So we have these phases that have been identified, but they may not happen. You know, we've had a lot of plans, we've had a lot of, just look at poor Lisa Rigsby Peterson and the arts center scheduling, I mean, for one year. So this perhaps isn't appropriate, this is a higher level question other than the master plan. But how, if we're tying the development of these parks to the phases and the phases may change, how is that going to be handled?
That is an excellent question, Mayor. So we will dig into the master improvement agreement because those two overlay slightly. And then we will also go back to the annexation agreement, which has essentially that kind of turnover threshold switch for those dedicated sites. So we will put a fully flushed out scenario in the next staff report for council.
So, and ideally, Rashana, what I'm looking to see is the process. Should the phases change, the process that will be employed to resolve the issue of when the submittals for the S I P will be and when the park construction would be. So, and as I'm thinking about it, if there are any other elements of the development that are tied to these phases, and I think as I'm reflecting on this, some of the road construction was as well.
Correct.
I think we need to understand if the phases change, what the process will be to establish the timing of the roads and the parks. And if anything else that I'm not thinking of, Rashana, I know you will be great at. I know you have it in your brain a little bit closer than I do, so please advise on that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Wonderful. I don't have anything else. Does council have anything else? And then anything, and I'm assuming that Rashana, you have everything you need from us, correct?
That is correct. That's what Austin and I were looking for this evening, was just that general feedback, any of those big picture questions like you just posed, so that we know how to refine our report for the full application review at the formal meeting. Austin, did you have any other questions?
Austin, no, he's good. Okay. I know, I do know that Councilmember Anderson is going to want to contribute on this. So I would just like to reiterate, I would love it. I know he's going to have access to this, but you guys could reach out to him to make sure he has an opportunity to provide comment after he has reviewed the video from this evening. That would be ideal. Okay?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much. Okay, great. All right, moving on, update on Winter Cheer campaign and 2020 grants for Lone Tree businesses. Jeff Hallwell, a Director of Economic Development and Public Affairs. Jeff, and survivor of COVID. So Jeff, we're so happy you're on the mend and back and feeling better. And so appreciate your great work over the holidays even with COVID to make sure our businesses had everything that we could possibly offer to help them to be positioned for success. So Jeff.
Well, thank you, Mayor and council. I'm back to 100%. So I appreciate those comments. And I also, it's great to see you. Happy New Year. And I just want to take a few moments to highlight our end of the year efforts around both the Winter Cheer campaign, so you know the results of it, as well as give you some, a summary of the business support programs, of the financial support programs that have gone out to our local businesses in 2020. So, next slide, please. You've seen this slide before, but just as a reminder, Winter Cheer was designed fundamentally as a regional retail marketing campaign. The goal was to use some of our CARES Act dollars to entice, encourage, or advertise to our trade area, as well as those that don't typically shop or dine in the city of Lone Tree, to come here and experience Lone Tree in 2020. This campaign used the three taglines of shop, eat, and give, obviously supporting our retailers and our dining establishments. Next slide, please. It took on a brand. We saw the brand was consistent throughout the campaign. But a lot of the copy that was taken on can be, you know, seen here on the left. You know, an advertorial was taken on in the Villager newspaper. Or there was, you know, direct advertising in the middle in our Colorado Community Newspaper suite of magazines. And then on the right, the brand was very commonly seen in our digital marketing, direct mail, everything else that got out there. And so you'll, you probably saw the same brand, and we were very pleased with the artwork and the work done by Forte Advertising. Next slide, please. But the bread and butter that was paid media, and so some of the numbers that can be seen here as reported by our marketing firm, you know, 25,000 pieces of direct mail, about 461,000 different versions of print in the Colorado Community Newspapers, Villager Newspaper, and 5280 Magazine. We also had, you know, great streaming audio, about 525,000 impressions delivered through Spotify and other related sources. And then at the last moment, we chose, we had a little bit of extra budget. We chose to advertise directly on Bonneville Radio, which was KKFN, KOSI, a lot of those mid-range FM stations, so that we could advertise directly on radio as well. And then the digital marketing platform, you know, hit a large number of 4.2 million, totaling in the end about 6.5 million impressions that we were able to make from our paid media efforts. Next slide, please. I think more fun though was what we were able to do with earned media. You know, Denise was very, very busy on social media, pushing out the different pieces of, you know, shop, dine, give, as well as the Winter Cheer campaign. And I'm sure you saw a whole lot of that, and it wasn't just, you know, direct social media, but website promotions, the video that was produced for our paid media, as well as for our earned media, and press releases to talk about the various things we were doing throughout the campaign along those themes. Safe shopping promotions, that was a big portion of what we were trying to do, is promote safe shopping, as well as, you know, dine in, I mean, carry out, takeout and delivery, all of that kind of thing that we wanted to promote. A fun statistic that we liked was that our seasonal savings program, where we encouraged different retailers to have a promotion. The map posted on our website showing those promotions, it had, as of yesterday, 16,000 map views, or about 405 per day since it was launched. So that was, became a very popular form of our earned media. And Kyoko was very proud of that statistic, and I think it was a great way to promote our local businesses. We were able to tie into the Shop Local Colorado campaign. Any community doing this was able to, you know, do a more statewide effort, and we hope it played a small role in our efforts as well. And then finally, probably the most visible thing was the igloo program. Forty of them were placed throughout restaurants in Lone Tree. And I'll get to another piece on that in just a bit. Next slide, please. And though we don't control all of the habits of shoppers or what everyone's doing to advertise, I hope this played a small role in the shopping trends in Lone Tree in 2020. As you can see from this map and the data that we follow, the late November, early December traffic at Park Meadows finally got to a point that was very similar to that at the beginning of 2020. In fact, some of the latest days in 2020 were the highest shopping days of the year, still dwarfed by previous holiday seasons because people are still reacting to COVID-19. And probably in a safe way, that's good. But, you know, we did see a return of shopping. And keep in mind that this also, you know, includes the month where we didn't have a lot of in-person dining. So a lot of the visitors here were in here shopping as well. And I hope our next month or two, we'll see this in our financial records as well. Next slide, please. And then beyond the, you know, the full parts of the campaign, there was a really big effort to provide small business support. This igloo portion of the campaign was, of course, whimsical, but also it came at the very right time for businesses that were needing some assistance when their indoor dining options were shut off. So I have a very short video from you from CBS4 that I'll show, and that'll happen on the next slide. Can you please forward it?
Of course, the numbers of hospitalizations and new cases are only one part of the pandemic. Restrictions and shutdowns are changing the way local businesses operate, especially bars and restaurants. Michael Abada, joining us live now from Lone Tree. And Michael, you learned the city has come up with a creative way to help local businesses while still taking the pandemic seriously. So what'd you learn?
Yeah, Kelly, it's all about these igloos here. They allow people from the same household to come out and enjoy a meal, or in this case, a craft beer together at a restaurant or a brewery. But it's not the igloos that are the unique part of this story, it's how they got here.
So we've just evolved the way we cater to our guests.
You've heard it before, the COVID-19 pandemic and all the rules and regulations designed to stop the spread of the virus has changed the way Coloradans do business. Perry's Steakhouse and Grill is no exception.
We've used this as an opportunity, I think, as most have, to turn it into a positive.
The dining here is about more than just chops and cheesecake.
It's about atmosphere, something that was tough to create for a lot of people with capacity limits. That is until they got a little help from the city of Lone Tree.
The city reached out, they told us our options, and the city had purchased igloos with a PPP loan.
We knew with the cold weather coming on, we really wanted to help.
With a small budget and some creative thinking, the city decided to buy 40 igloos to give to restaurants for winter outdoor dining.
Small businesses are at the heart of all of our communities, and I think they have been hit particularly hard by the COVID pandemic.
That's not to say they are taking the regulations lightly, though.
We do really take this virus seriously in our community, but we do really want to make sure folks feel safe when they come here.
Perry's got four and have equipped them with Christmas lights and heaters to create a unique Colorado outdoor dining experience. So far, people seem to like the idea.
They're an absolute hit. We have a full booking every night for them.
Now, the mayor of Lone Tree, she says at first, these igloos, the idea of them, twas a slow to take off. But now there's actually a waiting list for them. So they're trying to secure more funding so that they can buy more igloos for more restaurants in Lone Tree. In Lone Tree, Michael Abada, covering Colorado first.
Michael, thank you.
Well, my apologies, the embedded video got stuck, but I'm sure you recognize a lot of those voices. And the point is, we were very pleased with the earned media that came out of this, probably even more than the paid media that came out of the campaign. And the whole point of this is to be supporting small businesses. And just a couple more slides and a summary of 2020. The Paycheck Protection Program that you remember launched in March and finishing in July. Lone Tree received 562 loans, or 562 businesses received loans for a total of $40 million, retaining almost 2,500 jobs. The economic disaster injury loans. we have a, a full summary of that. In fact, I received an updated number today, which actually puts this number closer to 18 million instead of 15 million of those that were distributed through the city of Lone Tree. Next slide, please. Very pleased with the, the finality and the support from Douglas County that occurred with both their CARES Act's small business grant program as well as the Restaurant and Event Venue Impact Grant Program. Launched in September, the Small Business Grant Program, it had, were $10,000 grants. 27 companies in Lone Tree received them for a total of 169,409, or 10,000 max is what you could receive. And then the, the Restaurants and Event Venue Impact Grant Program was significant. $2.3 million were distributed to Lone Tree businesses in the form of 24 grants. Many of those grants were somewhere between $100,000 and $200,000. And it was a, there to support revenue losses for the month of December that people couldn't achieve because they couldn't open. So this is unprecedented. I haven't seen anything like this in my, in my career in terms of the amount of public support for it. And I guess I probably hope I don't either because we'll be back in a better economy where we're, we're not doing this anymore. And then finally, I'll, I'll go to the final slide here and just and highlight that there's still more coming. The, the recent stimulus bill signed by the president will also include $284 billion of more PPP loans. I, I am curious to see just how popular it is. It may be less than before, but any business that had a significant loss from 2019 to 2020 in any quarter, or about 25% less than what they made, it can qualify again to apply for a PPP loan. And then those small, launching later this month, the State of Colorado Small Business Relief Program created by Senate Bill 20B or in, in a special session, will be administered through Douglas County. Douglas County will submit their final application and follow with the Rappo Douglas Works and Application Program that will allow our business to apply for $3,500 to $7,000 from the state program as well. So we will keep pushing these programs, but I thought important to note that Lone Tree's been a good recipient of these programs as well. And at this point, I'm happy to answer questions and thank you again, mayor and council for your time.
Thanks, Jeff. And I think that was a gift from God for me. I, I hate watching myself on video. So that was super perfect that that part got stuck and we could only hear my voice. That, that's bad enough. So again, you did a tremendous job kind of shepherding this through the whole process. So a huge thank you. But let me turn it over. We'll start with our mayor Protem for a change. You get to go first, Kath.
I love it. Okay. So Jeff, thanks so much. And we're glad that you're doing well personally. That's probably way more important than any of the rest of the stuff. But I would just say that I love what you guys pulled together here. And I think it was, again, during a time in which there was very little to be excited about that the timing of those igloos, not knowing that we were going to close down again was just amazing. And really, I think probably helped many of those organizations stay afloat during this time. So just really appreciate your forward thinking there and your continual focus on looking for ways to keep our businesses productive and happy. So, so many thanks to you and the whole team who participates in such things.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And council member Shaw?
Thank you. Yes, I, I thank you, Jeff. I think this was such a creative campaign. And as a daughter of a former advertising guy, I think my dad would have approved of the, of the Winter Cheer campaign. And I hope it really has helped the businesses. It looks like it did drive traffic into Park Meadows. And I, I just have very high hopes for 2021 and keeping our, keeping our businesses able to hang on until, until they can thrive again. So, thank you.
Agreed. Thank you. Council member Shaw?
Council member Carpenter?
Thanks, Jeff. And glad you're on the mend. Yeah, I thought it was a really effective campaign. Just as a consumer of media, I, I caught several of the messages. I'm like, wait, that's, that's Lone Tree. That's us. That's pretty cool. So, so great job there. And always the, the free press is always great as well. I think it helps build the Lone Tree brand. And we're doing a really effective job of that. And the Carpenter family is doing their part right now to keep all the businesses afloat. When you saw that graph of Park Meadows Mall visits, I think all six of us were there most days when you saw those, those, those spikes. So, and then dinner behind me is courtesy of Viabachi. So we've been doing everything we can just to support our local businesses because we want to see them through this for sure. So great job.
Yeah, thank you.
So, and again, Jeff, just want to echo council's comments. And I have the idea for the next campaign. And it's going, and I shared it with our city manager this afternoon. It's going to be welcome back when we bring all the business employees, when we open up all of the offices. We're going to have to have some kind of a similar campaign for welcome back to the city. And I think we could do very kind of copy. The creatives will come up with something much better than that, Jeff. But that, but you know, no rest for the wicked. So, thank you for this great success and get ready for the next one. We know, and I, I will share with you, and I think council knows this as well. I think folks in the community know who we are and as we frequent our local businesses and whether they're a chain, a local chain or locally owned and operated, I have heard tremendous gratitude about the great work and, and our great, I want to offer our gratitude to the county for their great partnership with the grant programs, the loan programs too. So Jeff did a wonderful job and his team of making sure Lone Tree businesses were aware of everything that was available to them at the state, local and federal level. And I really so very much appreciate that, but do want to thank our county partners as well. And also say, let's, let's keep this great momentum going and let's get ready to thrive in 2021. So, thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
And since Jay indicated he's got dinner waiting, I, I am going to suggest that we take up the COVID and five star program update during our council meeting this evening. We have a very light council meeting and allow everyone to just have a half an hour, not quite, but a half an hour break. So you can get some, so Jay, the kids won't eat all your food. So, pardon?
They better not.
Yeah, they better not. Yeah. So is everyone okay with, we're going to, I know staff is fine with it. Council members, are you comfortable taking a half an hour break, coming back at seven? The only thing I do want to just note before we take this break is on our consent agenda this evening, we've got Resolution 21-01, a resolution reappointing directors of the Lone Tree Arts Center Fund Board. And if we have any questions for Lisa Rigsby Peterson on that, or we will see it on consent. It's just a reappointment of members. We, we all good?
All good.
Okay, wonderful. I'll ask that council come back a few minutes early. And staff, can you remind us, do we just mute everything and return to this or are we going to log back in?
Log back in. It's a separate meeting.
Okay. I wasn't, the last time it was the same thing. I, I got it. Okay. Thanks, Seth.
Thank you.
All right, guys. I will see you all in about 25 minutes. Okay? Thanks. And thanks, staff. This is a great presentation this evening. Kudos to every single one of you that presented. Really appreciate the good work. Okay?
Thank you.